I would like to call the Monday, June 20th, 2022 Orange Board of Education meeting to order at 7:03. Is that right, Susan?
Yes.
Could we all stand for the pledge, please? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God in the visible with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Ziman, would you be kind enough to read the mission statement?
I'd be happy to. The Orange Elementary School District recognizes that the education of each child is the shared responsibility of every member of our community. Our goal is to inspire and empower each student to achieve academic excellence, embrace social and individual responsibility, and lead with integrity. We believe all individuals should be valued and treated with respect. Together, we will make a difference.
Thank you, Mr. Ziman. Any public participation? No, seeing none, we'll move on. Consent agenda, I will be looking for a motion to accept the items under the consent agenda. The items are the regular session meetings, I'm sorry, minutes from the May 16th, 2022 Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes from the May 16th, 2022 Board of Education meeting? Mr. Ziman, second. Susan? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? I'm looking for a motion to accept the meetings from the June 13th, 2022 Board of Education special meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes from the June 13th, 2022 Board of Education special meeting? Tatiana? Renat? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Good. Superintendent's report, Dr. Scarpetti.
Good evening, Mr. Crowe and board members. As you are aware, the school year officially ended last week for our students, and we'd like to extend our deepest gratitude to the entire Orange community for making this a successful year as we continue to address any challenges that have come our way. As I have stated in meetings in the past, I have had the opportunity to present, I began sharing where we've been and how far we've come. In these presentations, I shared the transition the Orange public schools faced during the last two years. For example, this year, we began with structures that included masks, plexiglass, cohorting, having no visitors, and other mitigating factors to keep our students and faculty safe. And we ended this year with mask choice, visitors back in the building, and school-wide events. In my mind, this doesn't just happen. We have a lot to be thankful for and many people to be grateful for who did their very best and assisted the district for the sake of our students the past two years. I want to thank all the board members who attended the ceremonies either personally or virtually this last week. We had a beautiful day and wish all the best to our students as they continue their learning journey onto Amity Middle School. As well as the school year ending well, so did 21st Century After School program. Even though this is a tuition-based program and not run by board funds, we work collaboratively with 21st and want to extend our gratitude to that staff. Especially when we were fortunate enough to return back the first day of school. They did a great job. As in years past, we will be meeting with the director of 21st this week to go over next year. I want to thank Ms. Riccio for making herself available to attend. As I share other acknowledgements of our staff, I don't want to be remiss of, you know, I still feel that they are our students. But I like to honor students who received the Eagle Scout Court of Honor. I'd only want to congratulate all the scouts who accomplished achieving this Eagle Scout badge, but especially our Orange students. They include Jason Bayoun, Benjamin Cap, Frankie Cavallaro, Zach Jeremiah. I'll tell you this, I guess I didn't have the endurance to accomplish this goal myself. I had a nephew that did. It takes five to seven years or sometimes longer to complete this journey to the rank of eagle. This was a huge accomplishment, and it was honored by state reps being there, our first selectmen and other people. I just wanted to compliment these young men, and I think this is one of the reasons why we do what we do, to see a child where they start, especially in pre-K and kindergarten and where they end up. So again, congratulations to all of them. In addition to that, we've also want to honor our current students, the recipients of our CAPS award, that's Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents. From Peck Place School, Aneesh Tavennis, Ellie Liu, Dashan Zhao. From Racebrook School, Sean Fitzpatrick, Brady Nguyen, and Edward Dubovic. Turkey Hill School, Tarek Weber, Akriti Kapoor, and Avery Als. Also, as we honor students, I want to honor the students who won the spelling bee. From grade three and four, we had Evelyn, I'm sorry, Evelyn Wong from Peck Place. And from the grade in five and six competition, again, Edward Dubovic. As I mentioned, it took a variety of people to make these past two years a success. As I focus on the promotion ceremonies, I want to again extend to all our community, our PTAs and Os, in addition to our custodians, our staff. One group that I've at times neglected, but they've been in my heart and grateful for their work, is the Park and Rec Department. They help with benches set up and of course, taking care of our lawns. And throughout this all, we also passed a referendum on May 18th. So I want to extend a thanks and gratitude to not only our parents, but all our citizens who supported our budget. And that ends our report. Oh, I apologize, Mr. Crowe. Personnel update, we are still negotiating with regards to our administrative assistants and paras. Last month, I shared we were going to begin negotiations with school monitors on June 14th, but unfortunately, that date had to be rescheduled and are waiting a new date. And we'll update the board as follows. That concludes my report, Mr. Crowe.
Are there any questions for Dr. Scarpetti? No? Betty, please.
I just wanted to say it was my pleasure and my honor to attend the Racebrook School promotion ceremony. It was so gratifying to see all those fine young men and young women moving on. And I would especially like to extend my thanks to the Racebrook School PTA for their very generous gifts to the school in the name of the class of 2022.
Anyone else? Very well. Mr. Gray?
Good evening, everyone. I'll begin with a report on our grants. The first grant is the American Rescue Plan Individuals with Disabilities Education Act Part B grant. We were allocated $72,921 for this grant. The purpose of the grant is to provide programs to assist with the excess costs of providing special education and related services to children with disabilities. To date, we've spent or committed right around $10,000. The bulk of this for in-person professional development around restorative practices. Restorative practices provide students and caring adults with an intentional, inclusive, and respectful way of thinking about, talking about, and responding to issues or problems that arise. Our next grant is the ESR-2, which is the Elementary and Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Funds Special Education Recovery Grant. We were allocated $60,200 for this grant, and it's intended to assist school districts with addressing delayed, interrupted, suspended, or inaccessible IEP supports and services for students. We intend to use the funds to provide students with supports and services to remediate literacy, mathematics, and social emotional skills. To date, we've spent seven, or committed $7,000 for training to provide supplemental services in the form of tutoring for those students experiencing challenges due to dyslexia. $27,300 has recently been committed for job embedded support, coaching, modeling, co-teaching, and instructional refinement. And finally, our ESR-2 and ESR-3 grants, again, elementary and secondary schools' emergency relief grants. ESR-2, we were allotted $164,000, and we've spent about $55,000 to date mainly on supplies for the 2021 summer school. And we will be doing that again this year, and that's for supplies mainly. The American Rescue Plan Elementary-Secondary School Emergency Response Grant, ESR-3, ARP-ESR-3, we were allotted $326,000. $94,000 has been spent to date mainly on salaries for our summer school program in the past year, and we will be using that again this year. Our ESR-2 grant runs through September of 2023, and our ESR-3 grant runs through September of 2024. As mentioned during the last meeting, the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen have graciously funded several Board of Education items out of the capital fund. Those items are Chromebooks, increased internet bandwidth to go along with the increased amount of one-to-one computing that we now have. Some school safety and security upgrades, flooring repair in the sixth grade wing of Racebrook School. Ceiling tile replacement at Turkey Hill School, and interactive board replacements throughout the district. So we appreciate the support as always from the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen. For food services, in May, Orange received $27,169 in Supply Chain Assistance Fund to purchase unprocessed or minimally processed American-sourced food products for our school nutrition program. The USDA allotted these funds to alleviate supply chain disruptions in the school meal programs. The funds have been used in May, they are being used this month, and they will be used when we get back to school in September. Also, since early on in this pandemic, public schools have been offering free meals to students age 18 years and under. Unfortunately, the federal government will no longer be funding this program as of the end of the school year. And while we had hoped that the statewide solution would offer, would be offered prior to the beginning of the next school year, it's not likely that the state will be able to do that. As such, parents and students will again be asked to pay for school lunch. Given wage increases, difficulty with food supply, and inflation costs around food, prices may need to increase by as much as 50 cents, 25 cents per meal to conform with the upcoming school year budget and serve meals that continue to meet the federal requirements. And finally, under the finance report, it seems as though our audit had just ended and we're already starting the next one. So later this month or in the next week or so, the auditors will be out to do some field work and prep work before the next audit begins when we return back to school in the fall. And that concludes the finance portion of the report.
Any questions for Mr. Gray on finance? No? Mr. Gray, would you like to move on to your next report?
Sure. Facility updates. Summer cleaning, our custodial staff has begun the summer cleaning procedures at each of the schools. Our custodians at MLT are getting the building ready for summer learning here. We are using part of the building for summer learning for our youngest learners. And we have our custodians at Peck Place School currently getting Peck Place ready for summer learning there. And again, we do have a considerable amount of students coming to take part in our summer learning programs. Dr. Russo and Ms. Zito have put together a great program for our children this summer. There are enrichment opportunities as well as remedial opportunities for students to help kind of ameliorate some of the gaps that occurred during the pandemic. So thank you to both of them. We have several small projects that will be taking place throughout the district. Those include the repair of the steps at the BOE entrance here. Installation of a new gate in the fence line at the Peck Place School parking lot, which will help with traffic flow. Repair of sixth grade floors, as I said before, replacement of ceiling tiles at Turkey Hill School, and abatement of a small utility closet as well at Turkey Hill School. And as Dr. Scarpetti said, I'd like to thank the people that we work with in the community, especially our Park and Rec crew. I want to thank Chris Small and his crew, Mike and Patrick from Park and Rec for their assistance with our promotion ceremonies. They helped out at Peck Place and Marielle Tracy School, supplied bleachers for both, for the students and for the parents. And they also helped us set up and break down chairs before and after the ceremony. So kudos to them, thank you to them for taking the time to help us out. Many hands make light work on those days, so we really appreciate their help. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for Mr. Gray? No? Very well, thank you, Mr. Gray. Dr. Russo?
Good evening, I'll start with an Orange bicentennial update. Resources assembled by Orange teachers Beth Palacio and Ellen Townsend regarding the Orange bicentennial were shared with all faculty May 27th, right before the parade. The resource is entitled "The Orange Bicentennial Classroom," and it represents the Orange Board of Education's contribution to this historical event. Special thanks to all the community partners who supported Ellen and Beth in the creation of that resource. But special thanks to Ginny Reinhardt, the president of the Orange Historical Society, and our own Board of Ed member, Betty Hadlock, for her contributions as well. A summer learning update, a communication regarding summer learning was shared on June 13th with all families. In addition to badges with weekly schedules which were sent home in backpacks, we did get some calls that there were some mistakes. We're working to fix those. We've gotten some other emails from parents, and we have our administrative assistant returning all of those emails and answering those questions. Summer staff training is currently being planned, and we are excited to share that we will be using a platform entitled Pick My Kid. Yes, Pick My Kid. We are learning how to use it. We will share information to parents on how to use this platform two weeks prior to summer school beginning. And we hope everybody is patient with us. We think it will be better than last year. And yeah, so we're looking forward to trying that.
If I may interrupt quickly, what Dr. Russo is referencing is that when we actually started the program last year, it's, in my opinion, a unique program. It's not that you just sign up for one thing and every student does the same exact thing. You have a choice in your decision, so you know, my daughter, if I wanted to attend in the morning and then leave for a couple hours and come back because those are the specific sessions she wanted to attend, that's what we do. And so we appreciated all the feedback parents gave us, but since we did it in a way that was student-centered, it was a little bit, let's say we had some learning growth that we had to do the first few days. So that's what Dr. Russo is referencing.
Right, it kind of resembled the Orange Carnival. So we think that this will be... Oh, yes. So it is a safe, what was that? Oh, yeah. So we don't know enough about it, but all we do know is that it is a safer and more efficient way for dismissal. So we're learning more about that, we're learning about it this week.
So if I could just add additional information. This is a program we started to pursue in some years past, and what it does is assist us in a student exiting and a parent coming into the building. And so say, for example, and I can't remember, but if someone's driving a Toyota Camry and they pull up, a message will show up that Mr. Cap is pulling up with a Toyota Camry. His license plate is this, and his child could go out straight to instead of having people come in. It's supposed to be a safer way of approaching our students, not approaching our students, but safer way of exiting and the safety of all our schools. So we thought it'd be a good time to pilot during the summer and see if it's worthwhile to actually implementing in the school year.
It looks intuitive. The developer did it because one day went to pick up his child and there was another student in the backseat. But it seems very intuitive, and for any parent who is not comfortable using it, there will be scanners that we can place in the car to help us identify, like just a regular old sign. All right. So next, Smarter Balance Assessment Update, the results are in. We're currently reviewing those, analyzing them, and we will be meeting with our principals to strategize on how to use those results for next year. This is one data point that we will add to our data sheet along with all the other data points in addition to student day-to-day observations. And finally, an update regarding the posting of the Orange curriculum on our website. At the Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee meeting, it was shared that we are working to post all subject area curricula, including the bundled standards per unit. The unpacked standards into content and skills so parents know what we're teaching at what time of the year, along with essential questions and possible contexts for the learning. Samples were provided to all staff at the last Wednesday's curriculum meeting so that they... they are also aware that we're going to be doing this. So, we have lots of work to do over the summer. Some of these plans include integrating our Grade One and Two code instruction, scope and sequence, to also include retells and stages of narrative development. So, we're excited about that work. And that's all I have now.
Any questions for Dr. Russo? Tatiana?
For the Pick My Kid, I know it's something that would go out to parents with more specifics, but would it have to be the same vehicle every day that would pick up the child's? Or could it vary?
I think it can vary.
Okay.
But that's a great question.
Thank you.
And again, Mrs. Messina-Mullin, there will be information, but it will be an app on the phone. We're going to the districts. One of our staff members actually viewed it in another district and has reported. And so, we're going to take, see, but yeah, we want to make sure it's flexible, again for the safety of our kids. And hopefully help with the dismissal of the after-school program, I mean, of the summer camp, but also we could possibly look at for the after-school program or at the end of the day. And hopefully have more fluidity of our traffic, too.
We have three faculty members who are going to be experts on Pick My Kid. They're researching it, as Dr. Scarpetti said. They're going to be the experts on the Pick My Kid. And also, when we're done, we will survey the parents on how they liked it. We won't have to have any more of that checking of the license and the long lines with the clipboards. It's like, it's relevant, it's current, it's up to date. And while we've never used it before, it really looks very intuitive. We did share a link to the website so that parents could at least get a little brief overview of what it's like. But you know, it's like anything, until you use it.
Right.
You don't really know.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else for Dr. Russo? Go ahead, Susan.
I think I missed it, but when does summer school, summer camp start?
July 5th to August 4th, Monday through Thursday, varying sessions anywhere from 8:30 to 2:30.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Very good. Thank you, Dr. Russo. Mrs. Edo?
Good evening and happy almost summer. The beginning of C T Seds or the Connecticut Special Education Data System is just weeks away of being fully launched. Our staff has completed data transfers and ensured our district files are ready for this transition. Staff will begin the formal Train the Trainer sessions over the summer, and this staff will train the remaining staff throughout the school year. All Planning and Placement Team meetings beginning July 1 will be treated, will be created with this new system. Our staff will also assist our parents as they transition to this new document. It is helpful to know that the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act has not changed. There are new, no new laws governing special education. This is simply a data collection system and a way to generate this very legal document. And as Dr. Russo reminded all of us, the Extended School Year Program runs the same timeframe as the Summer Enrichment Program, July 5th through August 5th. Our program runs anywhere from 8:30 to 11:30, and it's based on the individual needs of our learners. This has been a very busy year for special services. We have seen an increase in the number of students eligible for special education and Section 504. In order to provide the needs for our students, we have added an Applied Behavioral Analysis Program at Racebrook School. This program, like the program at Peck Place, is critical in keeping our students in their home district or their home school. In addition, we have increased one, by one special education teacher. This teacher is expected to split between Racebrook and Peck Place School. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for Mrs. Edo? Very good. Thank you. All right. We will move on to Board Business. We have some second reads here. Policy Second Read 4118.231/4218.231, Smoking, Drinking, and Use of Drugs on School Premises. Do I have a motion to accept Policy 4118.231/4218.231 as presented? Do I have a motion? Susan, second. Mr. Ziman, any discussion on this policy? All in favor? Opposed? Policy Second Read 511, Admission Placement. Do I have a motion to accept Policy 511 as presented? Susan, second. Ronette, any discussion on this policy? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Number three, Policy Second Read 6114, Emergencies and Disaster Preparedness. Do I have a motion to accept Policy 6114 as presented? Ken?
Ken Vitale, second.
Tatiana, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Moving on to Policy First Read 4118.21/4118.5, Academic Freedom. Policy First Read 6141.312, Migrant Students. Policy First Read 4131.5, Continuing Education Units. Policy First Read 6162.31, Test Exclusions. Policy First Read 6144.1, Exemption from Instruction. If anyone has any questions on these policies, we will be looking to vote on them at the next meeting. Please contact myself, Dr. Scarpetti, or Mrs. Hadlock. Okay? All right. Later on in the meeting, I'll probably, I'll be looking for a motion to enter into an executive session to discuss item number 10, the Superintendent's Evaluation. Sorry?
Number nine.
Number nine. Oh, do you have another? I don't have it. Where's that? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. And number nine, I'm sorry, Discussion of Possible Action on Hiring of Security Personnel for the Public, Orange Public Schools. Dr. Scarpetti, if you would give us a brief overview on the discussions that have been taking place, and we'll move on from there.
So, as many of you know, the discussion of putting school security officers in our building, at least from my recollection, has occurred at least four or five years ago. This typically occurred during the budget process when we were looking to hire staff. Even though those discussions occurred, subsequently, there's been meetings that have been held with the Building and Grounds Safety and Security Committee over the years where myself and Mr. Gray presented about the impact of having school security officers. In addition to that, we actually met with the Chief of Police in those past four or five years. And when we've expressed concerns of that of some board members, or in addition to parent emails that we received, part of the discussion was school resource officers compared to school security officers. And the chief recommended if the board were to pursue this, he would recommend school security officers. And again, this was years ago. The big difference between a school security officer and a school resource officer is that they do not have arresting powers. It would be a retired, actually, it's required by a Public Act 13-118, I believe, that it's required that they be a retired police officer or state police officer with at least 15 years' experience and in good standing. So, their training, their experience is that of a police officer. Unfortunately, there's matters that all districts are facing. You may recall a threat across the United States of a threat against schools. Again, more parents wanted police presence at our school. They increased the police presence, but more emails came with regards to all-day presence. Again, topic of conversation came up at Subcommittee meetings. And then sadly, we had the tragedy of Texas. Again, focus was in elementary, and again, as you know, we serve an elementary school Again, I received, you know, several, more than a handful of emails requesting police presence or that of extending what we have already implemented. On a side note, you can imagine the emails and questions we get when we are in our schools, and not to be evasive with any questions, we are very private of what we do in our schools to protect our staff and students. Why is that? Because if we share it publicly, if there's someone who would like to, and again, I apologize, even hate using that we have to use these words, but attack our school and our kids, knowing it to be a soft target, we don't share that. But we try to speak to the parents and know that this school district, after Sandy Hook, has implemented several mitigating factors to deter, to help, to assist, and get police there in time to help if, God forbid, this were to occur. I only share that because I don't want to be evasive to our parents or anyone else. We do it to protect our kids, not to go into the details of what we do. That said, conversations occurred, so we've had subsequent meetings. Again, it started off on May 31st where we had a meeting with the Subcommittee. At that meeting, the Police Chief attended, along with Detective Bailey. After May 31st meeting, we had another Subcommittee meeting on June 6th. After, at that meeting, that Subcommittee voted unanimously to present to the Board school security officers in our schools. And let me take a moment. That is not in place of our monitors. We still want to keep our monitors in existence at our schools. Then, in order to inform the entire Board, there was a special meeting on June 13th where, again, discussions of what we have implemented, again, not to share with the public, but in an executive session of what we have. And again, I would ask the Board members to keep that confidential. I know that some of you are integrated in our community. It's not that we're not trying to be private in any way except of the protection of our staff and students. Again, at that meeting, we had Detective Bailey. And so, that's the update thus far, Mr. Kraut, of where we are with school security officers. Again, we have pursued, and again, the Chief of Police has guided us about description of what that would look like. He's referenced other districts that have implemented a program such as this and staff. We want to continue to pursue until this was in front of the entire Board and get the directive of the entire Board. Again, this will impact policy. CAPE has a model policy which we've started to look at. So, there are other elements that we need to do. Just to inform the Board as a reminder, what the Chief shared with us is there are training that occurs in August, and it's, there's only one training. So, it's important, if the Board chooses to enact on this motion that the Subcommittee has recommended, we would have to engage the police immediately and assist us in developing the roles and responsibility posting in order to get interested retired police officers or state police officers, so we can enlist them and sign them in this training.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Scarpetti. Mr. Cap, could you give us an overview? It was the Buildings, Grounds, and Security Committee that made the recommendation, and can you give us a bit of an overview on that process?
Sure. Without going into much detail, because we were in executive session, you know, we did meet back on May 31st and with the Chief and Detective Bailey. They gave us their input, and then we met again on June 6th, the following week, to have a follow-up meeting. And then, our committee was in favor of moving it to the full Board, and then we had that special meeting on June 13th. The only things that I can add because of executive session is that this district has been very proactive on security of what we've implemented. So, we, we're, our parents should be extremely happy with what we've done over the years. Unfortunately, because of the ongoing situations, we just feel that taking it to this next step is just another layer of security. Unfortunately, it's the times of how things are these days. You know, we used to be able to go to a, an airport, and we didn't have to go through TSA security years ago, and now you do. So, again, there's not much more I can really give out, but our committee definitely endorsed this to move on to the full Board.
I would like to add that in our discussions in those meetings, Chief Gagny answered many questions, also said that the Police Department would provide training and assistance in the process, continuing on into the future. I asked Chief Gagny point-blank if he would be supporting the security guards in the schools, and he said yes. Detective Bailey felt the same way. And as Mr. Cap said, what we're looking to do is add another layer of security for protection of our children and our staffs. And it's unfortunate that we're in this position. I had a discussion with a Board member earlier, or later this afternoon, and I said point-blank, I find it disgusting that we even have to have this discussion, but we do. That's the reality of the situation. And no differently than we put the best of Bules in the schools. The Chief agrees, and I believe it's time for us to step it up a little bit more at this point. And again, the Chief also said maintaining the monitors at the door would be something that he would recommend, and I believe that that is our intent. I believe that's Jeff's committee's intent, so we would do that and move on from there. So, at this time, I'd like to ask anyone who might have comment to please speak. Go ahead, Betty.
Safety of our students and staff is of utmost concern to me, and I know all the members of our Board and our entire community. It's necessary to have this conversation, as you said, Chairman Kraut. Unhappy as I am to have to consider having armed guards in our schools, I understand that whatever it takes for our students to continue to be happy and safe learners in these turbulent times, I guess we have to do it. I understand that policy will have an important part to play as we move forward, and I look forward to having, being part of that discussion. Here's hoping, though, that legislation to keep guns away from those who should not have them actually happens.
I would agree with that, and one of the things that we all need to understand is, going forward, if this was to be voted and approved, I would be calling on Mrs. Hadlock and her committee to provide policy tailored to our needs, to our schools, to our students, and to our faculty.
and to our faculty. And also, I would task Dr. Scarpetti and his staff than in interviewing these particular security guards, that, keeping in mind that we want people who will become part of the fabric of our school systems, preferably and possibly people who are actually members of our community, so that it's not a, I know some people would, you know, use, it's like prison guards or something. We, we don't want that. We, we want people and we want policy that will be part of our, our family, the Orange Board of Ed's family of employees and students. So Mrs. Hadlock will be playing a big part in that, in her, in her committee. Anyone else have a comment? No? All right, then. Let me read the motion. So I am looking for a motion for the Orange Board of Education to hire school security officers to provide security in the Orange Public Schools. Such personnel shall have and maintain the credentials, certification for and shall otherwise have all qualifications required to carry arms in public schools in Connecticut. And just as an added note, the training that they go through is provided by the state and is required by the state. And there are, as Dr. Scarpetti outlined, several very strict considerations into hiring these people. You can't just hire retired military or anyone else. They're very specific in what the state wants us to hire if, if we, if we go down that path. So does everyone understand the motion? So do I have a motion? Susan, do I have a second? Mr. Ziman, any further discussion on this? All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Good. Thank you very much. Moving on to standing committees. And for Dr. Scarpetti's evaluation, we will be going into executive session after standing committees. Finance and operations, Ms. Riccio.
Finance met prior to this meeting. Mr. Gray sums it up very well for me. I don't have to do a whole lot now. But I do want to say thank you to the cafeteria people specifically for all they've done through the year. And we are operating within budget, which is what we're supposed to be doing, so all good. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Riccio? Personnel policy, transportation, Mrs. Hadlock?
The policy committee met on May 31. We reviewed a number of policies that needed updating with state statutes and specific adoption dates. One policy we reviewed was the CEU policy, Continuing Education Unit policy, that's no longer needed, so we are recommending that that one be rescinded. We also discussed the academic, academic freedom policy and added some language to it, saying that controversial subjects align with the Orange Board of Education's curriculum. We added that there, just wanted to make a note, because people did have questions about that one. Please reach out, it's your earliest opportunity with questions. We won't be meeting, voting on these until July, so, and we will meet on June 27. That is my plan, anyway. I haven't discussed that with other chairs, but I think we'll have things to discuss, so.
I would imagine you would, Mrs. Hadlock. Any questions for Mrs. Hadlock? Buildings and grounds, Mr. Cap, unless you have something, unless you want to add to what you previously said?
Nope, just that we met back on May 31 and following on June 6, in that Mr. Gray covered everything that the schools are going through on the summer activity list there for buildings and grounds, but otherwise, everything else was already covered.
Thank you, Mr. Cap. Curriculum, Mr. Ziman?
Mr. Kraut, I have to apologize to my fans, many of whom I know hang on just to get to my report. We didn't, we did not have a meeting, and I have no report.
I am sure that I can speak for the community and say that is of great disappointment, Mr. Ziman. I, I, Mr. Ziman makes me laugh. He really does. One thing that I forgot to mention, I did speak to two board members previously, one I think was on Sunday, one was today, Ms. Rodriguez and Ms. Trumper. Both board members expressed support for the hiring of the security guards. I should have mentioned that sooner, but I did not. Thank you to Susan, who always keeps me in line. ACES report, Susan.
Thank you. The ACES Governing Board met June 2 at noon. It was our last meeting of the year. We will not be meeting in July and August, just saying, unless we have to for executive meetings or special meetings, that's it. Also, I wanted to note that I was re-elected as president, as chair again of the ACES Board, Governing Board, so thank you very much. It's an honor to be able to do that and help out where I can. And we have, all of our same officers are back as well, so that's good. We continue to work on some facility items, Mr. Gray's area, but at ACES at Chase, we have a bunch of things to make it code compliant. We are purchasing the building at Wintergreen School. That is in its final process, and we have some renovations for that as well. We also have a construction project at 88 Bassett Road as well, for a special education autism school. More to come on that. I passed around a book. It's all about ACES and their services and their schools. So if anybody is interested, I did send it around, and I do have another copy. I'll leave with Mrs. Hedo or Dr. Russo. Couple other items. One is ACES is doing a, ACES proudly presents Community Day at Duncan Donuts State Park, not State, Duncan Donuts Park. July 30, game's at 6, tickets are $11.50. If you're interested, let me know, I have a flyer on it. Also, there's a walk, an ACES Walk for Education is scheduled for October 16. I'll remind you, as it gets closer to it, it's called, it's called ACES Lace Up for Education, ACES Laces. And so some of the things they do is collect items such as shoelaces and sneakers, and so this is a walk, will be a one-mile loop to support ACES. And I missed that one. And there was a car wash June 11 as well. We have approved all the budgets for ACES, and have done some policy things, and we've renewed our, our executive director's contract for another year. That is all.
Any questions for Ms. Riccio? I must say, ACES is lucky to have Ms. Riccio as chairman. A harder worker, a more dedicated person, you're not going to find.
Thank you.
And we are very fortunate to have her here as well. All right, so I think we've come to the point, am I correct, Susan, where we're going to go into executive session? So I'm looking for a motion to enter executive session. Dr. Scarpetti, will you be joining us?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Scarpetti will be joining us. Do I have a motion to enter to executive session? Betty, second?
Second.
Susan, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? We are now in executive session at 7:53.